Well, welcome everybody. We're really light today, it looks like, to our meeting today, December 4th. Let's go ahead and start this meeting with, and follow me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a one nation under God, equal to all, for whose justice is
Thank you. First off, we need to go ahead and have a motion to approve the minutes of our regular meeting and work session on, from November 20th. Make that unanimous. And next, we need to pay our bills and approve the demands and handwritten warrants.
Also, I'll make that motion that we approve the demands and handwritten warrants.
Make that unanimous. Next up, we will have Mr. Steve up from Planning and Zoning.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
This morning, we're here to get a third representative to the Planning and Zoning Board from Mr. Max's district. He has nominated Denny Swop to fill that position, and we feel like that would be an advantage to the county, and want to get your opinion on it, or your approval on it.
I don't see Mr. Swop here, but I'll, I'll ask Clay if he'd like to say anything about this appointment and talk a little bit about it.
So, Denny Swop is part of Swap Construction?
So, Denny Swop is, he's a part of Swap Construction. They do mine construction in the Safford Mine and the Morinti Mine. Last time I checked, they employed probably a little over a hundred employees. He's young, ambitious, super smart. He has a place out in San Jose that he's moved here from. They're originally from Luna, New Mexico, and I feel like he will bring great value to planning and zoning. Super smart guy, lots of common sense, and I feel like he'll be a, he'll be a good person on our commission.
Paul, do you have anything to add on that?
No, I don't know that I've, I've formally met him, but I have a high level of confidence in Vice Chairman Max's selection, and we'll look forward to meeting and working with Mr. Swop.
I think this is a great, great appointment. I think he will bring a lot of different views and more than we've had in a long time. And I know him somewhat, not real good personally, but I think that's a great choice. So, if we could get a motion, a motion, a motion to approve this.
Yeah, I'll make a motion for the approval to appoint Danny Swop to the Planning and Zoning Board of Commissions.
I'm pleased to second that motion.
And I as well. I will make that unanimous.
Thank you, guys. It's been, that's been an open slot for quite some time, and we're glad to have it filled.
That's great, great. Get them filled. Thanks, Clay, for your appointment and your selection. Next up, we need to take care of a little bit of business for the County Board of Supervisors. Should I take this, Dustin? Do you want to explain a little bit about what it is?
Yeah, I'll explain a little bit. We're about a month away from bills being dropped at the legislature, and County Supervisors Association requests one appointee from every county to sit on what's called a Legislative Policy Committee. And that one representative from each county has the opportunity to vote when, when CSA brings bills that, that they would like to take a position on, either in favor or against. So, that supervisor would have the ability to vote. Typically, we meet every Friday morning at nine o'clock, in person or virtually. All supervisors are invited to attend, but only one supervisor from each county has, has actual voting privileges. So, with that, I'll turn that back over to you, Mr. Chairman, and the board for deliberation on, on who to do that. In the past couple of years, it was Danny Smith, and before that, for many years, it was Jim Palmer. So, we got a fresh slate.
Right. Well, just to say a little bit about this, we all, like he said, we, we get to partake in these calls, and we can also even talk and, and give our opinion on the bills in the, on the calls, even though we're not a voting member. All three of us can do that. So, I, over the last few years, I, I participated almost every one of them. I don't think I've ever said anything. I just listened. But it's good to be involved and know what's going on down at the state. But at, at this time, I, I would, I would highly recommend that we, we go with Mr., our Chairman David for this appointment. I believe he really digs into these bills heavily, probably more than I, I do. I don't know about Clay, and understands them well. And he's had the experience in testifying down at the state, which is a, is a, is a great thing to have, is that experience. But again, it's, it's something all of us can listen to and partake in. But that's how I feel about this with the Chair, Supervisor David being our appointment to the LPC Committee. You have anything to add?
I agree 100%.
Do you want to make a motion? Or Paul, would you accept this?
Yeah, and I, you know, when you say Danny Smith and, and Jim Palmer to be in there, to, to step into those shoes are, it's a pretty amazing opportunity, and, and I would be honored to, to represent Graham County and, and the board, and, and look forward to serving. I'm not sure I look forward to this session, but I look forward to serving, and we'll do my very best. So, thank you for your vote of confidence on that. It's not official, but thank you for the considering me.
We have a motion to point?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to appoint Supervisor Paul Roger David to the Association Legislative Policy Committee for Graham County.
I'll go ahead and, I, I can second that, Chairman. I, it's not, I, I would, I'd hesitate to nominate myself, but I will second it.
I'll make that unanimous, and thank you, Paul, for willing to serve. We appreciate it very much. You're going to do a great job. Great job. Thank you.
We, we'll, we'll work together on it.
I apologize, Hannah. Do we, we have anybody online? Okay, I'll welcome them. I apologize to them. Thank you. Next up, we have an appointment. I guess Dustin should take this and kind of explain to me and the board, rest of the board, exactly what it is.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, we belong to, with 12 other counties, to the Arizona Counties Insurance Pool. Thirteen of the 15 counties all pull together for everything from car insurance to workers' compensation, to the really big thing like risk insurance and liability insurance, et cetera. All the county managers of the 13 counties sit as trustees on the board, and Graham County is the only county that's never had an alternate. So, I, I was appointed as the trustee when I was hired and will continue to serve as the trustee, but this agenda item is here to have an alternate. And Jennifer St. John, who is a previous county manager of Santa Cruz County, also sat on this board as a trustee for many years, and it's a good opportunity to have an alternate in the case that I'm not available for a meeting.
Okay.
So, that's what the, the request is, to sustain me as the authorized representative and appoint Jennifer St. John as the alternate trustee.
Okay. That's great to have you guys there and have you there representing us. It's, it's good to get information firsthand. We have any other discussion on this?
No, I just, that risk management is becoming more and more important, and, and we, I appreciate, you know, Dustin just quietly goes out of town and is, is gone for the day, sometimes longer on, on, and I think you, do you, you serve as a vice chair? Not, not on ASAP, but you're on the, on the county, the county manager, your, your vice. Is that correct?
Yes, Vice Chairman. I'm Vice Chairman on the County Supervisors Association, Managers, and, and the past Chairman on ASAP.
Okay. So, lots of experience, and, and it's great to have an alternate. I'd go ahead, if there's no other discussion, I'd make a motion that we do appoint County Manager Dustin Welker as our authorized representative, as well as appointing Jennifer St. John as our alternate trustee representing Graham County.
I'll second that.
Make it unanimous. Thank you, Dustin and Jennifer, for willing to serve very much. Next, we have up a brief period of time here that we all can talk about our adventures over the last couple of weeks of what we've been doing. And I'll go ahead and start with our county manager, Dustin Welker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, just a couple of things. We've been working on our Graham Economic Partnership. This is our economic development effort that we've revived. The more board members that sit on this are, are myself, John Casella, the Safford City Manager, Heath Brown, Thatcher's Town Manager. Brown, Thatcher's Town Manager, Pima's Town Manager, Vernon Batty, and also Sean Winham with Freeport-Mackmurran, and Danny Smith with the hospital. We've been working with Sorenson Financial to get all our bylaws and everything, all our policies filed with the Corporation Commission. We were able to do that last week, so I'm just reporting that we're moving forward. And as soon as the Corporation Commission approves it, we'll file our 501(c)(3) status with the IRS. So we are moving that along. We've had some positive already interactions and little projects going on, and we'll have more information coming. But in February, we'll have a kickoff meeting, and Congressman Juan Ciscomani has committed to that meeting on February 21st. So we're excited to get an economic development coordinated effort countywide, and we're excited to kick it off with the US Congressman. So we'll have more information on that coming. Just to report on animal control, we've been seeking training for them for a very long time, and we were able to send our animal control supervisor to Sholo for some training and animal control policies and euthanasia, and it was a very successful training. I want to thank IT and the Sheriff's Office for also providing some training on the new TASER equipment that we're able to purchase for them. On the election front, Hannah and I have completed our election recertification training, and on the 15th and 16th of next week, that's a Friday and Saturday, the state is doing a tabletop exercise for all election officials in the state, and Hannah and I and Jared Kiefer in IT will be attending that. So we're definitely getting up and going with elections, and it's pretty much upon us. So working hard on that. One of our big projects, the Hila River Fire Mitigation Projects, we started out in Geronimo, and our contractor are the Creamy, Creamy Construction on that, and they are working from west to east and have three sites, three of the 12 sites completed. So they're moving right along. Just a reminder, the Light Parade is this Saturday, and we'll have a float in there. We have a couple more days, and just want to really thank all the department heads, elected officials that provided some manpower for that. We really appreciate it. In the Highway Department, our crew continues to work very hard on the Fort Thomas Crossing. They completed the second large pour. The concrete is basically to the top of the culverts, and these next couple of weeks, we'll be pouring the actual cap. They have been able to get the guard rail that we purchased from the first project that didn't necessarily pan out, and they're going to be able to make that work for this. So yeah, we're excited about that, and hopefully, within two or three weeks, we'll have the top of the road for that complete, and then we'll also do all the dirt work and repairing of that road that's been needed for a very long time. So really appreciate the highway yard and all the work they've put into that. It's been an incredible effort to get that done. We appreciate it. And meanwhile, they've also had a smaller crew working in Eden, and we're able to finish a 40-foot-long low-water swell on Eden Bridge. So when the river runs high and flows water through there, it'll get off the road and flow to the north and get back in the channel. So that was also one of our big projects to complete this year, which they were able to finish. Lastly, just want to report on the Engineering Department. Our two big projects that we received state funding on for Norton Road and Ray Lane, we have some fairly finished plans that we've sent to some trucking companies. One of them was Clay Mack, I think, or they're going to, if they haven't already. Just to look at those and make sure they're going to be sufficient for the ours trucks to make those turns. And then on the tally wash, they're working on getting quotes for some prefabricated bridge spans for that project. So those projects are also moving along, and that's my report for now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Been busy. Vice Chairman Mack, you have anything? Chair, Supervisor David?
Thank you. Just briefly, on the 20th of November, the afternoon after our board meeting, I had a, sat in on a case conference where they reviewed people's eligibility for assistance from the Arizona Department of Housing. This is for Cochise County, but they're beginning to do the same thing, where they consider people, what they call it a by-name list, so they actually have a number, and we're not talking about individuals because of confidentiality, but that is a, gives the priority to women with children in getting housing and housing vouchers. And so that is kind of very, very deep below the surface, but that's happening, and it's a really good thing. Tuesday, the 21st, this was facilitated by Keith Alexander, but he had Senator Gowen and your wife attended, representing the State Transportation Board, and a number of people, including the members of the San Carlos Tribe, to discuss the safety on the US 70 corridor, and had about an hour and a half discussion. And ADOT was not present. In fact, it's interesting that ADOT, the ADOT's office, the Public Information Office, will not allow the area engineer to attend. It's kind of a soft gag order. Just I guess they don't want them making any commitments that they haven't approved first. So we had to do this in the absence, but we did have discussions about increasing enforcement and projects, passing lane projects, which are in the works, and also trying to remove some guard rail by, on some of the lower, smaller drainages where you don't have to put a whole lot of embankment, being able to extend box culverts or pipes and remove a lot of the guard rail that doesn't allow, and increase the clear zone to allow people to leave the highway if you have someone coming head-on and get out of the way if there's. And so that, that there wasn't any action items other than an awareness, a communication with the tribe. I don't, they have a new chief. I don't see, in fact, Sheriff was there also. He represented the county very well and gave people a dose of reality, what they, you know, some people think that it's, you just say, "We need more enforcement," and you flip a switch. And it's actually, even though we, it's in the county, it's the DPS. They have a working agreement. You actually have to have a working agreement with the tribe in order to do enforcement. And so if there's an opportunity to influence and get more manpower from DPS, that's probably some low-hanging fruit. The other things I'd report is that later, or the next day, there was a Graham Greenlee Transportation Feasibility Study that I attended at the college. Actually, that was the 29th. I skipped the page. Went to, on the 29th, went to EAC, and there, working between the tribe and Easter Seals Blake Foundation. You know, for a while, that was just like a huge burden for Blake Foundation to have to do it. They did it to accommodate. They had a previous contract that was being taken care of, and they decided that they want to be in the transportation business. And so they are developing this feasibility study. It won't happen for another year or two, but they have funding for the tribe to continue their service, but they're going to then end up with fixed routes so that there will be about 10 different places, at least for now, twice a day, 10 locations where they'll make a loop, starting at, say, Vincent DePaul's, and going to the hospital, and then ending up in Walmart. And they also will stop by the EAC campus. So there will be opportunities to add some, in addition to what they call the dialer ride, where people who are primarily handicapped, and if there's capacity and room, then they'll allow other people. But they actually are increasing the transportation, public transportation here. That's the proposal. We'll see how long the funding lasts, and if there's not ridership to justify or support it, you know, that's another thing, is to develop. And the city of Safford was there, and they'll develop some bus-type stops that won't be on the highway just because of having to work with ADOT. So they'll be off the highway, but there'll be some bus stops with a little, a little screen that tells people when the next, when the next bus will arrive. So anyway, that's a positive thing. That's CGO, and is the parent organization, and they've worked with the tribe and also with Blake Foundation. So that's coming, and it looks like it's going to be, no public transit is self-sustaining. It's going to continue to be a money, in fact, they figured, I think they figured the cost, it's a dollar, a dollar quarter to ride, and the actual cost to provide the service is $51 a ride. So the economy's there, you know, that's just like in any urban city, you know, you never, the fares never even come close to covering. And so it's going to be a cash black hole. But as long as the federal government, and we should probably not just say, well, thank goodness, it's federal money because it's our money, but as long as the federal government is continuing to subsidize that, I guess we'll have a transit system. But to try to out-of-pocket it or have the municipalities cover it, it would just be a, we wouldn't be able to throw enough money at it to keep it going. So anyway, we'll take advantage of that as the, as the funding continues to be available. There was a, on Thursday, the 30th, there is a mental health community collaborative progress meeting that I was able to attend telephonically. I had an opportunity, I thought it was choice, to go to the, represent the county at the Giving Machines ribbon cutting on Saturday night. There were about 150 people, and it was a community, not just an LDS, but it was a community event, really nice. And so I felt privileged to have been invited and the chance to, all I did was sit in the front row. But the Giving Machines, it's a, it's a great effort, and of course, none of the monies is being generated and going to the church. It's actually the three agencies is the, the local agencies are Boys and Girls Club and the CICUS, and then the Angels Closet. And are those, those are the three. They rotate those from year to year. And so those are great, you know, great opportunities for them to generate some money, and then people can give to, you know, UNICEF and international, as well as local. But that's great for our community, and I just wanted to comment on, I don't see any of our people from the maintenance here. They typically aren't here. They're out busy. But our lighting and the, and the visuals, just the courthouse is so appealing and looks so nice and speaks so highly of the employees who work for the county. And I would just commend them on behalf of everybody. Thank them for their work. You know, it's, it's no fun to be up in a man lift, especially if the wind's blowing, to be up there 20 foot, 30 foot above the ground. But they, it's superb. And of course, the city of Safford is, but it's a really nice. It's very attractive, and it speaks well of our community. That's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll be real brief. I just mentioned that I was at the meeting with Gowen and Transportation there at the college.
That's right, you were.
Yeah, and I will remind you, the Light Parade again on the 9th, and on the 15th, a very important event will be held. We're going to do the groundbreaking for the Women's House of Hope, which will be called Carrying Hearts. And that's been an effort, such a collaborative effort of so many people, County Attorney's Office, United Way, the funding for that is just, and the support we've had is just tremendous. And I just want to thank all that supported that and helped us get it going. And that's the 15th. I believe it's one o'clock. I won't be able to attend that. I have to be in Huma at a state transportation meeting. So anyway, I would just encourage everybody that wanted to go see that. We, generous donors has made this happen, and I'm just very excited about it. So, and I'm glad about our bridge in Fort Thomas. I thank the Highway Department for that again. Maybe them folks will get a Christmas present, a little delayed, but they'll get a Christmas present. After how many years, they'll finally have a bridge down there, so I'm excited about that. And that's all I have. Next up, we'll go into a public hearing. Is this for the road request? Is that correct, Manager?
Yes.
Yes, we have, going to a public hearing. Mr. Steve McGoy will talk to us a little bit about this.
Good morning again. Matt Sherwood asked for a road name. So actually, I think one of my guys suggested that he get an address before, or a road name before he started dressing some homes that are going to be built down there in north of Pima. And so today, we're asking for you to approve Morris Court off of Morris Lane. It's about a 450-foot cul-de-sac, basically, that will serve at this time, three lots. There's a fourth on it, but I think it fronts Morris Lane. It's possible that those parcels are big enough to be split again, so it's possible there'll be more than those three. But he originally asked for Porter Lane, which we already have one of. And I had told him that if it was smaller than 300 feet, it had to be, by our bylaws, it had to be, or by our rules, it had to be Morris something. But because it was longer, he could name it something different. His second choice was Morris Court, and it kind of worked out in that Colton Morris has bought the next lot and has pulled a permit there, so he was in favor of it. So I guess this public hearing would be, if there was some opposition or someone wanted to speak for it, but.
Don't see anybody. Don't see anybody. Okay?
Question, Mr. Chairman. Is this going to be south of town or is this in Pima?
It's north of Pima, north of the bridge, north of the river.
What, we have a Morris Road, is that right, south of town? I'm just wondering if we're, if, you know, by duplicating or adding another name, are we, are we going to have the opportunity for confusion, everything from Google Maps to 911? If we, because when I hear Morris, because that's just me, and I'm, you know, kind of Safford-centric, but it just seems like, you know, that having more than one Morris is, it could be a problem.
Well, we have that situation in quite a few places. We have two Branding Irons, four Navajos, three, two Conchos. And as we get the opportunity, we fix that. We have spoken to Peter Velasis about renaming the Morris that is south of town access as Clay Knowles. There's, I think Dwayne Larky is the only person who has an address actually on it, and he doesn't live there. So I don't think it's going to be that big a deal. But I think when Peter develops the RV zoning that he has on that, I think we will change that name possibly to a numbered street, and then that will alleviate that, and then all our Morises will be in one spot. That's the, that's the idea, is that if you think Morris, you know where, you know, which direction to head, and hopefully, we can get that fixed in the next couple of years.
The fact that you've, that you're actively working on that and see that as a potential problem, I appreciate that. So yeah, I'm, you've satisfied my concern. Thank you.
Okay. Since we, I don't see anybody in here to wants to speak on this matter, so we'll close the public hearing, and then we will go into a motion. If I could get a motion to approve or disapprove this? If I could get a motion to approve or disapprove this?
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and make the motion on the recommendation from our Planning and Zoning Committee and Director. I would move that we name the parcel number 105-03-033, approximately 450 feet of access along that as a Morris Court.
I'll second that.
Make that unanimous. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Next Thursday, call to the public. I don't see any we have, so we will go next to our executive session. Do we need an executive session we're going to go into?
I'll move that we go into an executive session, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Are we ready? Okay, we've now completed executive session. We'll close that and we'll go back into our regular meeting.
Let's get a vote to go back into regular session.
Could I have a motion to go back to regular session, please?
I'll make a motion to go back into regular session.
And I'll second that.
Unanimous. Now we are back into regular session and we will adjourn.